Kids and a wonderful wife and Eric doesn't live in the district, so he doesn't have any, any, any dogs in our, any of our races. So Eric, would you like to come up?
Hello, everybody. Thank you all so much for coming out and being informed and knowing who is running in your local race. It's very important. I can't stress enough how much local politics are important to the community. Kind of the format, each candidate is going to have a two-minute opening. And then each candidate will also have a one-minute response. And then finally on their closing statement, they'll have 30 seconds. So the first race we're going to have are this Arlington City Council races. So if I call your name, please come up. It looks like maybe only three are here. District three, Tamiko Brown. Is Tamiko Brown here? Diana Sala? Sala? Salem? She here? No? Saleh? Okay. Alexis Lupien? Are you here? Well. Dora Tovar? Where's Dora? Come on up, Dora. Welcome. And then finally for District three, Nikki Hunter. Nikki, are you here?
You want them to say Steven, right?
Yeah.
Welcome, Nikki. Thank you all too for being here. A lot of your opponents are.
Oh, I see.
Uh, let's move on to District four. Cheyenne Sokai?
Do you want to tell them?
No. Ni Hau Menta?
I forgot all about them.
I feel like I'm a principal calling roll calls. BW McLendon Jr.? BW, welcome. Andrew Peel? And finally for District four, Anne? I'm bad at names, but. Nawafulu? Nawafulu? Are you here, Anne? Nope, okay. Okay. And after you guys are done, then we'll move on to District five and eight. So welcome. All right. Mrs. Tovar, we'll start with you with a one-minute opening. And if you want, I'm going to tell all the candidates this. You can either choose to do it at the beginning or at the end. Make sure you give your website, your phone number, so people can contact you and look you up and see what your platform is. So, Mrs. Tovar? Two minutes? Okay, you each get two-minute opening.
Good evening. My name is Dora Tovar and I am a candidate for District three. I'm a small business owner, have lived in Arlington for almost 20 years. I've been actively involved in my neighborhood association. At one point, when Robert Rivera represented the district, I lived in the last block of the district. Now it extends much further south along 360. And I'm running because I've had a wonderful career working in state government and in federal government and through my business and decided that now that I'm almost an empty nester, my children have had a great experience growing up in southeast Arlington, attending Mansfield Schools. I ran for school board in 2015 to join Raul Gonzalez and came very, very close. And I want to listen to residents and I want to be a strong voice. There's a great deal of concern by residents that we are only asked for our opinion when it's time to build this first-class sports facility and then we don't hear, we're not asked anymore. And I know that in the high-growth area where I happen to live, there's a lot of people concerned about economic development and it doesn't come as a price. My website is teamdora.com. I welcome you to visit. I have an undergraduate degree and a graduate degree in public affairs. I've been committed to public service and I want to give back to the Arlington community by serving as my career winds down and ensure that our tax rates are reasonable and that we're not paying excessive rates for our economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tovar. Ms. Hunter?
Hi, guys. Thanks for having me, guys. My name is Nikki Hunter and I'm obviously running for Arlington City Council District three. One of the main reasons I jumped into this race, it was mainly because of what I didn't see. I was one of the last people to come into the race. We need someone in District three that's going to fight for our neighborhoods. I am so sick and I'm so tired of seeing the gunshots, the, you know, and next door people talking about cars getting broken. I think we need someone that's going to step in, that's going to work with our amazing police department and try to get our crime rates down. I have been endorsed by the Arlington Police Association, so I am committed to getting, to working directly with them, to forming a partnership with them, to work to get our crime levels down in Arlington. You can find me on my website at www.n-i-k-k-i-e-f-o-r-d-i-s-three.com.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Mr. McLendon?
Good evening. My name is Pastor BW McLendon Jr. I'm a coming you all a different way. We all believe in probably the same things as a strong city, a strong law, strong economic growth. And we believe in the same God. And I just believe that people with a like-mindedness can get together and work and achieve a whole lot of things together. So I believe as a country, and we can bring it to Arlington. I believe that if we work together, put our mind to it, we can achieve anything. So economics, equality, all of that is good. But when you don't, when you talk about it and don't do anything about it, that's when it becomes bad. And I think a lot of time politicians just talk about it and not have done anything about it. So I'm like my sister to my right. When we need something, we'll come to the people, but we got to learn to use the people, not only when we need something, but we also need to have something in place for them, for a growth, for everyone being inclusive. And I kind of figured, I didn't know if I was correctly at the right place because I'm an independent with democratic tendencies, but I believe the same thing as most people do in this entire room. So I believe that if we work together, we can get things done and we can move forward in a great way. All right.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Peel?
Hi there. My name is Andrew Peel and it's good to be here tonight among friends. Back in 1998, I wandered into Bodacious Barbecue after I returned from law school to the town where I grew up as a young prosecutor at the DA's office. And the first person who met me at the door that night was Ron Wright, a friend of ours that we all love and care about and I love very deeply. And I got drawn into a wonderful group of people who believe in liberty and independence and freedom and a strong country, who are unapologetically proud of the country that we live in. And since 1998, I've been a delegate to 10 of the 12 state Republican conventions. In the 2000s, I served as president of this very club. In the 2000s, I served as president of the Tarrant County Republican Assembly. And in 2003, then Arlington City Councilman Ron Wright appointed me to the Citizens Budget Review Committee in Arlington and said, Andrew, study hard and work hard for the people of Arlington. So tonight, as the incumbent city councilman for District four, I've brought a copy of the document that means a lot to each of you. This is the Arlington City Budget, $500 million. You know where the money that pays for this comes from? Say that again. Where does the money that pays for the city come from?
Us!
That's right, you. And what you need is somebody with conservative principles who believes that government should keep you safe first of all and that government is the effective allocation of scarce resources. And if the resources ain't scarce, that means taxes are too high. And I promise you what I promised y'all last time when I run and I came to this meeting. I'm going to bring conservative values to this document, keep you safe, and protect your investment in the city of Arlington.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. All right, Ms. Tovar, we'll start with you. I'm going to throw this one right at you all. Are you in favor of cutting funding for the Arlington Police? And also, what is your plan to combat crime?
No, I'm not in favor of cutting the police. And in terms of cutting crime, I think that we need neighborhood engagement directly with the police officers so they know we've had a tremendous amount of growth. And with that growth comes re-engaging communities in, whether it's the homeowners association, whether it's a voluntary, I sit on the board of my homeowners association and it's a voluntary one. So we, as residents, need to be actively engaged in the crime watch programs, in those programs that work hand-in-hand with neighborhood police officers.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Absolutely not. I don't think that we need to cut the funding for any of our police officers. What I plan to do, what I plan to do is I want to partner with our police department. I want to form a partnership to give them the resources that they need to make sure that our neighborhoods are safe and that our crime levels are down to the levels that we want them to be to.
Thank you. Pastor?
I believe that was Einstein who said, if you keep doing the same thing and expecting different results, you are going crazy. And I just believe that we don't have to take the money away. We may need to reimagine the spending. And that way, we could cover a whole lot of areas that may not be covered right now. And I know a lot of different people have different views because of maybe color, ethnicity, and race. But certain people have different values that are not aligned with a lot of these. So we may need to do some reimagining. I don't believe in defunding. I just believe in reimagining the police department to maybe show up some holes that may be in there right now.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
The core function of city government is to keep you safe. Defund the police was the most idiotic, stupid thing I'd ever heard in my life. On city council, what I want to do is make our police department better, make it stronger and make it more effective. I believe it's important for our police to have a bond of trust with everybody in this city, no matter what community they come from. But one way I've worked the past two years to make our police better is I've worked with the police chief and the police staff to provide more mental support and mental health care for our officers. Everybody knows when an officer goes out, all the perpetrator has to do is sit in his face and scream at him with all sorts of explicatives and video it. And as soon as the officer breaks one time or looks angry for one second, they win a media battle. So I ask our officers to hold all that in and stay incredibly disciplined and impartial. So focusing on our police officers' mental health is something I'm proud we've worked on to improve and that I will continue to work on so that they connect with all the neighborhoods in this city.
Thank you. And I think we're going to start with you and come back down this way. Define for me economic development and what is a proper role for the city of Arlington?
Economic development is what a city engages in to keep the tax rates on people's individual residences as low as possible. You know, one of the greatest dangers our city has faced over the past 10 years is if you look at the trend line of how much of the city tax burden falls on residences versus commercial businesses. For the first time in the past few years, we get more of our tax revenue at the city from people's homes, the taxes on homes, than we do from commercial businesses. So a place that the city can play a role is in attracting and supporting local businesses that are based in and have roots in this community. I'm chair of the city of Arlington's Economic Development Committee and we're going to have some important tools coming forth in order to improve our commercial tax base and take the pressure off you and your house and your pocketbook. And what I pledge is that we will invest in small businesses. Developers who come in and parachute into Arlington and build something and then bail and flip it, they should take a second-place seat to people who live here every day and want to build something special in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. Pastor?
Economic growth for me would be equality. And that just means everybody get a fair shot, a chance, without a lot of red tape to make growth in the area of businesses, residential families. If they have an idea, they want to make something of themselves in the economic realm, they should have an opportunity without being subjugated to, and I saw a thing on the news about the banks and loans and all that. We need to make sure everybody has a fair shot. And if everybody has a fair shot, everybody can get a piece of the pie, so to speak. As Jerry Jones likes to say, everybody can get a piece of the pie. And, but if you cut off some, certain people, I think everybody maybe not get an advantage like everybody else.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Economic development for me would be number one, supporting our small businesses that we already have out there. The pandemic has hit so many of the small businesses so hard. And I think really it's just getting out, supporting the small businesses that we have and encouraging the growth of more small businesses. Especially, you know, right now in District three, we have such a prosperous area. And, you know, I want to encourage more small businesses to come to our district. I mean, that's just really the way for the district to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Tovar.
I've been a, I've been a small business, I've been a small business owner for almost 20 years. And in Washington, I worked closely with the SBA so that I would understand these issues as I pursue them. The city needs to do much more in terms of small business development and economic development. We need an incubator in the same way that we created a technology incubator 10 years ago. And so we need to go back and, like Councilman Peel mentioned, really focus on commercial real estate, reassessing district by district, zone by zone. You know, our districts are very large and we've got to work in a zone-type of area to encourage small business. So many of our small businesses are micro businesses. They already were at home, so we need to ensure that we have the proper infrastructure to support them.
Thank you, Ms. Tovar. And we'll start with you again and go back down that way. What boards, committees, and other activities have you participated in that benefit the city of Arlington?
I have served as the board and vice president of the Board of the Arlington Hispanic Chamber, which existed very, very successfully and with many of folks sitting right here in the room. It's also a classic example of what happens when we have a prosperous city that attracts micro businesses and we don't support them. A lot of those micro businesses were getting more support from Dallas or Fort Worth or other municipalities to move there. And so that is one of the reasons that it caved. I also was very involved, I'm a marketer and was very involved in the Texas Rangers' marketing committees. And I also sat on the Texas Rangers' foundation board.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Well, I've served on the Arlington Community Relations Commission. That's really given me a chance to get out into the community and make a difference. Also served on the Friends and Foundation of Arlington Public Library as well as the Unity Council, which is the most recent that I've served on. I've also served in two sectors of the Arlington Rotary, Arlington Highlands Rotary. I've served as the president over in District three, currently serving as Arlington Area Governor for all of the Rotary Clubs. We get out in Arlington, we do make a difference here in the city.
Thank you. Pastor McLendon?
I'm a transplant to Austin, Texas. And so most of my experience would be from the city of Austin, but I see similarities in Austin, but they don't keep the motto. The motto in Austin is keep it weird, but Arlington is quite different, but similar. It's just a college town and all of that. So all the boards I've been on and advisory committees have been Austin ISD and city. But I still see the same kind of growth potential here in Arlington as well as, as I saw in Austin, Texas, too. So if we get our mind right and do what's right, our T-school in Mansfield, so I watched that city. I've been very close Pastor Evans at Beverly Hills, the mayor now at Mansfield. But I've been close in with a lot of things and seen a lot of things since I've been here. So we got a chance to really do some great things here in Arlington.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
Since 2003, when I served on the Citizens Budget Review Committee, I've had the opportunity to serve as an Arlington Planning and Zoning Commissioner for four years. I served on the last two bond committees to help figure out what bond projects need to be funded by the city. I served on the Comprehensive Plan Rewrite Committee for the city. And I've served on the Capital Need Steering Committee for the Arlington ISD School District. So I have two kids in school here, proud grad at Martin High School, class of 1990. Go Warriors! And, you know, I've also served as the president of my Sunday School Class at First United Methodist Church. I've served as the president of this very club and the president of the Tarrant County Assembly. And I've served on the Arlington Education Foundation to raise money for our schools. I love this city. All those experiences gave me the background, the necessary understanding of how the city works to be an effective council member for each of you. And I want to thank each of you for the role you played in building me up into who I am today so I can do this work for you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with you again, Mr. Peel. This is, I'm going to throw this at you, this is three questions and one. It's about transportation. How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Arlington? Do you think we have enough options? If not, what do you propose regarding mass transit?
Well, Arlington has voted three times against buses. I don't see any reason why we need to go adopting that mode of transportation in Arlington. But back in 2016, whenever I was on the Comprehensive Plan Rewrite Committee for the city of Arlington, I discussed a plan that was actually broached by somebody named Warren Norrie. You guys know that guy? Anyway, he had the idea that private companies could serve as public transit in Arlington. And what Arlington did is it ended up doing a partnership with a ride-share organization called Via. It's 14-passenger vans and you'll download an app onto your phone and you can take a trip wherever you want to go in Arlington for $3. We just expanded the program citywide because we were able to have funding. The greatest thing about this program is that it does not create government employees. So there's no government union, okay? Next to that, whenever the contract's up, we can bid it out to other companies. So you can have Via, Uber, and Lyft all competing to drive the price down for the contract to serve as Arlington's on-demand ride-share service. I think that that's the perfect way to go in the 21st century when it comes to public transit. And I'm happy with it and I want to keep it.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. Pastor McLendon?
Yeah, I like the, piggyback off Mr. Peel, the Via initiative seems to be a good one for the city. But we may need to look at other alternatives. I just don't want to close the door on buses and those things that may be affordable for each and every person, especially those who may have technological disadvantages, don't have access to, they said go buy a prepaid card from a store and fill it. But some people just don't have means and modes to do that. So I just think we maybe just need to make sure we cover each and every area. And I'm sure the city has done that, but don't close the door and say no to every possibility just yet.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Hunter?
Well, I'm going to piggyback off of them as well. Via does work for Arlington. I work in another city and let me tell you, we don't need buses here in Arlington. We don't need trains here in Arlington. Driving in Fort Worth every day, the traffic with the buses are a headache. I'm really happy with Via and I just think it's something that we should keep in common.
Thank you. Ms. Tovar?
There's no doubt that Via works. I do think that since 2016, our community has changed a lot. And, you know, we were very fortunate, I think, given the pandemic, that we had reduced traffic during the NFR. So we haven't really tested how our community responds when we're at the height of sports attendance. I would like to see a study done that's not since 2016, now that we're really planning for 2022. I think that one of the things we saw was that private transportation works. And it's just the nature of how the market has changed. We didn't know, you know, five years ago or in 2016, the impact that Uber was going to have supplemented with Via. We were just, I think, tremendously lucky that it worked for us.
Thank you. We'll start with you again and work our way back down that way. How much debt is in the city of Arlington? How much, I guess my question is, how much debt do we have? Or, I don't live here, but fine citizens in Arlington, how much debt does the city have and what are our pension obligations?
I'll be honest, I haven't looked at Mr. Peel's wonderful book where he has all those answers available to him. But I do have strong feelings about the debt, that it can be restructured. We have done some interesting things, even with Mr. Jones on his support in facility. However, I also spend a considerable of my work time in Fort Worth. And I do think that the model for Dickie's Arena, where you have private entities and not the public entity, meeting more of that. And I think those trends are going to consider, and I'd like to see more public-private partnerships where the public amount is capped and where we are really working to work down our debt and come up with other private sector solutions.
Thank you. Ms. Hunter?
Well, definitely I want to piggyback off what Dora said. I'm not even going to try to answer that question until I can do proper research on it. But if there is debt, it is something that we can, over time, work past on there. That's the only thing that I'll go say on that.
Thank you. Pastor McLendon?
Yeah, I should say, I'm ignorant of that number myself. But as with anything you've done with money, if you got a debt and you're paying interest, you want to pay that off as soon as possible. So I believe that if the city gets behind it with a mind to get that down, I think we can do that. And maybe this probably charges more with corporations and all of that to help to fund that idea and motive will help in a long way of getting monies down to put them in places where the city needs them to. We get debt down, that means you can do more for the city, for areas in each neighborhood and all of that. So, yeah, debt, I don't know the number, but I imagine it's high, but we can get it down.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Peel?
This is the bond debt paid from the city budget. The city of Arlington issues no more than $200 million in bonded debt every four years to construct things like roads, fix parks. And we are recently sent out about $45 million to build the Arlington Senior Center, which will be in my district and will be built within the next two years. And there is also the sports facility bonds that we have out that we're paying off and that we've been able to refinance at a historically low interest rate. The city must be very, very conservative in bonding, in bonded debt and in managing its debt. I'm proud to say that the city of Arlington has fully funded pension plans. So we aren't like Chicago, we aren't like Dallas, we aren't like Fort Worth. All of our employee pension plans are fully funded and conservatively invested. And I promise you that as I go through this work, thank you, as I go through this job and represent you on city council, that I will keep a hawk's eye on this debt and make sure it doesn't run the city into the ground like it has Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. And we'll start with you again and come back down this way. Obviously, you know that I once served in the Trump administration and I think us collectively together, along with the president, did a lot of good, hard work. And now we have a new administration that has basically changed everything that we did. And so my question to you is, do you think that Arlington should accept unaccompanied minors that are flooding in from our southern borders, even if this current administration agrees to fund the process? How would you handle this issue?
No, we're using our convention center to do COVID vaccine shots right now. We don't have the room or the facilities available to house those people. And we need to focus on completing our mission of getting our populace vaccinated against COVID-19.
Thank you. Pastor McLendon?
I believe, just one to, for my church. I believe that for humanity's purpose and reason, we should do what we can to facilitate the children. And I know I may get some heckles and boos, but contrary to the last administration, we should have been working on that a little more, just to make sure we had places to put them and take care of that. I just, being a preacher, we want to be like God and we want to be Jesus followers. He opened His hand and heart to those who are less fortunate. And I just believe we should, as a country, since we built that as our faith values, we should do that too.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Hunter?
That's gonna be a hard no for me. We're going through a pandemic right now. I think we really need to use our resources to do COVID-19 shots. I mean, we really need to focus on that right now, so no.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Mr. O'War?
I am confident that we are gonna have great representatives in CD6 that are really the ones tasked to focus on immigration. It is not a local issue, and I would defer to our Texas delegation to address that. I'm very proud to live in Arlington because of the pandemic organization and frankly, the leadership under Jeff Williams to ensure that we have the resources and that we have a system that not only meets our needs here in Arlington, but is a model for the United States. And I think that's where I will focus my attention, really on serving the residents' needs.
Thank you. We'll start with you again, Mr. O'War. What do you all think the three biggest issues that Arlington is facing right now? The three biggest issues. We'll start with you, Mr. O'War.
Okay. I think, I've stated it previously, growth, having measured growth and smart development. Many folks, we don't want to give up the green space that we have. And we want citizens to be involved in deciding the green space that we currently have as a luxury. And so, you know, getting the community involved in really that long-range planning, so it's not just members of the city council that get to decide those issues, but residents involved in the way that the City of Dallas and the City of Fort Worth have had grassroots community organizations and meetings to be able to discuss those issues. The second one is really commercial issues of ensuring that we are not, as a city, giving so many benefits to commercial employers who then pick up and leave and leave us with the tax bill and their empty buildings. And the third is really community engagement, since I've run out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'War. Ms. Hunter?
I think one of the main things, I'm gonna go back to crime. I think we have seen an increase in crime in Arlington. Obviously, COVID-19, getting everybody, getting their shots, that's one of the things that, you know, it's a struggle right now, trying to get everybody vaccinated and wants to be vaccinated. And obviously, third, I agree with Dora, with growth. Arlington's growing, and we do need to definitely plan for that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Pastor McLendon?
Yes, I was very surprised and indeed gleeful, so to speak, when I saw the Unity Commission by the City of Arlington. And I saw some friends on there. I think that goes a long way in making that number one priority. And I think that's just for the country. We need to be unified, and unity should be our priority with one issue. Economics, too, and infrastructure equality, three, I will put those, you can interchange those as you feel. But I think unity, we all together, all God's children, working together, one common cause, and that's to help each other lift one another up.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
Arlington's existential challenge is its aging 60s, 70s, and 80s homes, like the ones that I grew up in, and like the ones that many of you probably lived in. The key reason, the key thing that I tie all my decisions on council back to is will this decision increase the likelihood that young people or people with their own money will buy an older Arlington 60s, 70s, or 80s house and spend their own money to rip out the old 80s living room, wood wall paneling, and the mustard-colored appliances, and the Formica countertops, and update them? Because if we can't bring that next generation of Arlington residents here that will spend their own money, then the tax base will collapse, and the city will go down the tubes. So I think that that's the most important thing. Economic development and public safety all feed into that concept. If you don't have a safe city, if you don't have a city with vibrant, with good grocery stores, with good businesses, people aren't gonna want to buy our houses, and the city will fall apart. So that all kind of ties together. Arlington's older homes, we have a strategy to have them prosper again.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. Okay, this is gonna be the final question for y'all before you give your closing. I'll start with you again, Mr. Peel. Y'all's race is nonpartisan, but this is a Republican club. So my question to you, each of y'all, is, do you always vote in a Republican primary?
If you look at the emails sent out by the Tarrant County Republican Party, you'll find out that I've voted in six of the last six Republican primaries. As a matter of fact, I've voted in Republican primaries since I turned 18 in 1990. I have never voted in a Democratic primary, and I've made almost every single Republican primary since then. Some of the people in this audience know it because I sit out at the polls every primary.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. Pastor McLendon?
Well, we, I haven't voted Republican since Bush. But I've been a Democrat. I do have tendencies, we probably believe the same, social and fiscal, but some other things we may have some part ways on. But I believe we all work together, red and blue, we are the same.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Hunter?
In the past, I have voted Democrat, but what matters is how I vote now, and that's Republican.
Thank you. Mr. O'War?
I vote for the person. I have voted for Republican candidates, and I voted for Democratic candidates. I'm running in this nonpartisan race because I think the issues are so important to all of us. And one of those is making sure that we're paying the police department what they deserve. They took a 2% pay cut when we needed it the most. So I also plan to support the police by ensuring that they're paid appropriately for risking their lives.
Thank you, Mr. O'War. Okay, we'll start with you again, and this is gonna be the final, your final 30-second closing. Also, I'm naive to this, because I don't vote in Arlington, I don't live in Arlington, but I've heard that some of the districts are at-large and some are not. So please let everybody know where your district is, and if it's not at-large. If it is at-large, go ahead and let them know as well. But Mr. O'War, you have a floor.
Okay. District 3 runs from Arkansas south all the way along 360 to Debbie Lane in Mansfield, or into the piece that is now traded with the City of Arlington, the City of Mansfield.
And we'll start your 30 seconds, because you're explaining to them where, you know, we don't want that to be part of your closing. Yeah, it won't count if you give it.
Thank you. I'm running because I'm the most experienced candidate. I have the experience to be able to read Councilman Peel's sexy book over there, and be able to read them and know the budgets and have access to that information, and to start day one to fight for District 3. Thank you very much for listening to me and giving me the opportunity to meet you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'War. Ms. Hunter?
30 seconds. Strong leadership, community advocate, and someone that's ready to fight for District 3. I am willing and ready to work in partnership with our Arlington Police Department as well as our Fire Department. District 3 needs me because I am a community advocate, and I'm also a community builder.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Pastor McLendon?
Yes, District 4, and I'm just running for the people. With the events in this country and the magnitude of things that's going on, I just felt compelled to throw my hat in. And you may call me a neophyte or novice, but I can learn quickly, and I'm ready to learn and meet everybody at their level and get to work and do the best we can. Oh, my website is mclendonforthepeople.com.
Thank you, Pastor McLendon. Mr. Peel?
District 4 is roughly Arlington, south of 30, north of 20, and west of Cooper and Matlock. So if you live in that area. If you have your phone with you, I'd like you to do something for me. My mobile number is 817-366-8810. It's on all my campaign pieces, it's at my website, Andrew Peel for Arlington. If you have a problem, if you have a concern with the City of Arlington, you let me know. And I didn't even get to show y'all the Comprehensive Drainage-Flood Control Plan I may have had the city make this year. I mean, this is really sexy.
Thank you, Mr. Peel. I want to thank each one of you and your families and your friends for allowing y'all to run. It takes a lot, we know, so please give everybody a round of applause. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we're gonna have the city council races again, but this is District 5 and District 8. So when I call your name, come on up here. For District 5, Rebecca Boxall. District 5, Kennedy Jones. District 8, Barbara Odom Wesley. And finally, for District 8, Chris Dobby Dodson. Okay, everybody. Welcome, and we'll start with, and two-minute opening, right? Two-minute opening, okay? It's Boxall, you're first.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. I really love seeing people get involved in local politics. I really believe in small government, and this is small government, and it's why I'm running. I am an architect. I have run a small business for over 20 years. I've been involved in my community first, in my neighborhood. Then in my larger neighborhood, I was the president of Heart of Arlington Neighborhood Association. I was in that organization for many years, and then I became the president. I got involved with the city, and I'm currently on the zoning board, zoning and planning a zoning commission. I've been on the Zoning Board of Appeals and other city commissions and studies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
My name is Pastor Kennedy Jones. It's an honor to meet with you here on this evening. I am a businessman. I own aviation business that makes medical equipment for the emergency medical industry. I'm also a pastor, greater community missionary at Baptist Church, and I'm also the president of the Arlington Ministerial Association. So I get the pleasure of working with a lot of your pastors. I also have worked in the community. I led the March of Conscience last summer in June that assembled the largest group of people in this city to demonstrate for a more equitable and fairer society. And from that, we had the Unity Council, which came up with recommendations which will affect this city for the next 50 years. I've lived in Arlington, worked in Arlington for 35 years, as a pastor, as a community activist, and I've developed a nursery that is low-cost for key children and young mothers that can't really afford the higher cost of childcare. And so I've been involved and active for all my life that I've been here. And two years ago, I moved my residency, and here in Arlington bought a piece of property cash right behind the church. So it has been my honor to be here with you, to serve in this city. I've contributed a lot and asked for little in return, because that's who I am.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mrs. Wesley?
Good evening. I'm Barbara Odom Wesley, candidate for reelection to the Arlington City Council, District 8, which is at-large. I come to this position because I am purposed for service. I don't accept the label of a politician. I'm a public servant. I bring a legacy of service, and I bring a lifetime of service in my professional association, in my community volunteer work. And I am prepared for this job through my formal education and through my leadership experience. Serving on the council, I have chaired multiple committees, including vice chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for the National League of Cities. And I am a proven leader through my profession, through my community volunteerism, and through my service on the city council during this first term. Barbara Odom Wesley, District 8, Arlington City Council.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dodson?
Hi, my name is Chris Dobby Dodson. That's been my nickname since I was about 12. And I want everyone in this crowd tonight to feel that they can speak to me on that level. It's not a title. It's a sign of respect, just to say familiarity. We know each other. This is my 12th time to run. 11 losses, but one of these days. I would like to say, though, win or lose, this next year I will run again because I will make sure that as a charter amendment in this city, that we move to all single-member districts, so that we better represent all the different parts of town. I don't think it's a leap to say that the move to individual, single-member districts brought former Mayor Elzy Odom into office. And I think that that is exactly what we need more of. People need to be able to lean into their city and know that the person that represents them is listening, is active and engaged. I would like to say that the current record for most runs for office in Arlington is shared by Leico Reyes and Mayor Tommy Vandergriff. And I would like to say that, not too much to toot my own horn, but I plan to run as many times as Tommy Vandergriff in half the years. But this year, I do want to focus on expanding communication with our residents. I do want to professionalize our council, because it is so important, like I said, that we believe and we trust the ethics and the virtues of the people in office, and not just trust, but verify it. Again, Chris Dobby Dodson, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Ms. Boxall, we'll start with you. I'm gonna give y'all some of the same questions. You know, there's only gonna be four questions because of time restraint. I'm gonna give you all some of the same questions as the last group. First question, are you in favor of cutting funding for the Arlington Police? What is your plan to combat crime?
Absolutely not. They do not need to be defunded. I have a lot of specific proposals that deal with the way the city has developed, the way the city operates, the way the city looks, that I think would affect crime and would help the police in their job. I think there's a lot of things we can do in our city to make it safer on a physical level as well as supporting the police in their work. These proposals, I'd be happy to discuss with anyone, anytime. I'd love to discuss them. They're a little bit wonkish, so I can't really get into them here, but I'd love to talk to them.
talk to you about them.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Well, what I believe is that the term "defund the police," "defund the police," is a sexy term that has worn out his welcome. No disrespect to Rebecca, because I've heard her said it a lot. Now, I understand, my father was a volunteer police officer in the 1960s, and I know what it's like to go out and not know whether you're coming back home. I have worked with the police in District Five. Matter of fact, they were handing out four times more tickets in District Five than they were anywhere else in the city. And when it came to my attention, I brought it to their attention and said, "Look, check the numbers." They did, and they said, "Pastor, you're absolutely right. They wanted to make a big show out of it." I said, "No, this is a family matter. You guys broke it, now you're gonna fix it. Tell me what your plan is." They came back in sixty days, and they decided we're gonna fix it with warrants instead of giving out tickets. And that's how I'm going to work with the police. There are some things they're doing they ought not to do, and we have to put aside cliches and get down to the substance of what do we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Odom Wesley?
Thank you. I am absolutely in favor of funding the police completely and providing them with all the resources and tools that they need to keep Arlington safe. That is a number-one priority for the job of a city. And during the pandemic, I think we were all reminded of how important it is to have our first responders well-equipped to serve our citizens. So equipment physically as well as mentally. We just hired a new police chief, Chief Al Jones. Hopefully, you have had an opportunity to meet him, have him at your group to speak. And we're going to increase community policing, and that is the relationship between our police and our citizens. So when you know your officer who patrols your beat, you have a better relationship with them, we can de-escalate, and we can work together to make sure Arlington is a safe place.
Thank you, Ms. Odom Wesley. Mr. Dobson?
So if I remember the question correctly...
I can repeat it if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you in favor of cutting funding for the Arlington Police, and what is your plan to combat crime?
So if we design a more efficient use of resources, then I have no problem cutting funding from the police. Human beings are not Swiss Army knives, and we cannot expect the police to respond to every situation in our city. There are times where it's appropriate, and there are times where it is not. But what other office does the city have that they could send out into the community to prevent harm? Not necessarily a crime, but even self-harm. We have to be able to get past these sorts of litmus questions and really look at the issues that cause crime. There's crimes of greed, and there's crimes of desperation. If we ignore sectors of our community, and they don't feel like they can even use the police to respond to incidences in their neighborhood, we will have more crime because that is the response that is available.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. And before I go on to the next question, I know that District Eight is at-large. District Five, is it at-large or what area? If you, y'all, either one, if y'all can explain. District Five?
District Five runs from, it runs from Division down to Arkansas, and from Bowen all the way over to 360, and there's a little cul-de-sac that's just on the east side of 360 that's from Park Road down to just about Pioneer.
Okay. And Mr. Dobson, we'll start with you next question. Same as the last bunch. Define for me economic development, and what is a proper role for the city of Arlington?
Okay, so economic development generally is measured through efficiency numbers. We increase the number of tax dollars that come into our city from commercial properties. You know, we've had some issues with that in the city of Arlington. We've granted a lot of exemptions through Chapter 380 agreements, as well as owning the property that businesses operate. I think the city should be focused not so much on the economic development as the community development, because I think the economic will follow the community. But I do look at the Economic Development Corporation that we currently voted in last year as an opportunity for the people of Arlington to take the power out of the hands of bureaucrats and council-appointed friends, and instead be able to vote on this. I've noticed over the twelve years that I've run that each and every time that we vote on money, people show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Ms. Odom Wesley?
Thank you. Economic development for me means growth. We attract businesses to Arlington for the purpose of growth. That is, growth of jobs, growth of opportunities for our citizens, and grow the commercial tax base so that we can keep our property taxes low. So our job as a city is to be able to attract these businesses. And how do we do that? By having housing options for the entry-level employee, as well as the executives in the C-suite, by having the amenities that are attractive to a workforce. We have educational opportunities here in Arlington, from AISD to TCC to UTA. That is a strength in economic development. Attracting jobs, and these are not just minimum-wage jobs, but jobs that pay a livable wage. And for me, that's the EDC.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mr. Jones?
Economic development. When I started my business of making emergency medical equipment, it was about research. And what I learned is that for me to take and build that first prototype, it might cost fifty, sixty, sometimes a hundred thousand dollars. But once it was built and certified by the FAA, I could sell those same products for two, three, four, five million dollars. And so the research money that I put into it, for, I mean, it was pittance compared to the value and the substance of that, in the same way. I think that the city has a moral responsibility to the citizenry to go after as much economic development that is possible, from housing to going after other companies that would relocate here, to bring jobs that would increase the quality of life. And only the city with its size and its budget is capable of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Boxall?
You know, when I'm out on the campaign trail and meeting with people, people often ask me, you know, which one do I support, small business or big business? And for me, that's just not a good question because if you, when a big business is looking to relocate or open an area, one of the things they look at is, do you have a strong small-business base? Do you have a strong small-business network? That's what attracts them. So everything comes back to small business. And I'll reiterate some of the things other people said, housing, schools, all of this plays into it, but small business is really the key. And I'm not just saying that because I'm a small-business person. It really is the key to everything.
Thank you, Ms. Boxall. We'll start with you again. What boards, committees, and other activities have you participated in that benefit the city of Arlington?
Okay, well, first of all, I started off in my neighborhood association, the Heart of Arlington Neighborhood Association, which is a pretty large umbrella neighborhood organization. I then joined several city boards. I was on the comprehensive plan. I was on the downtown master plan. Was on the international corridor plan. And then I was on the zoning board of appeals, the planning, and I'm currently on the planning and zoning commission. So I've been involved with the city pretty much for about ten years now in various capacities.
Thank you, Ms. Boxall. Mr. Jones?
Like I said, from the city's perspective, president of Arlington Ministerial Association, also I'm the executive board member of the Four Day MLK Celebration Committee. I am also a member of the Unity Council, and I was the chairman of the Economic Disparity Council, in which all of the recommendations that we put forward that would have a dramatic effect on this city for the next fifty years, those were recommendations that mostly came from me. I have worked with Hana, have worked also with East Arlington and Newell. So those are the boards that I have specifically worked on here in Arlington. And then, being a part of the community as a candidate and a community activist, when COVID became a major issue, I was the one who pressed Carlson to bring testing to District Five. And on Saturday, we're gonna have testing, we're gonna have sign-up at my church for all of District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Odom Wesley?
Thank you. I've lived in Arlington for almost forty years. Moved here in 1980 after I graduated college in San Antonio. And I have a lifetime of service. I'm a lifetime member of the NAACP and chair of their health committee. I'm a lifetime member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, chartering president for the Arlington chapter. I'm a member of Women Inspiring Philanthropy, and we grant grants to nonprofits throughout the city. I have volunteered for sixteen years with the United Way and other nonprofits here in Arlington. So I have served from the PTA with my schoolchildren when they were in AISD, as well as other community volunteer organizations, and city council-appointed committees. During my first term here on city council, I was appointed as chair of the municipal policy committee, the economic development committee, and visit my website.
Thank you. Mr. Dobson?
So this one might be a little bit sparse. Turns out, the city council has not appointed me to any of the boards or commissions. However, I did, as part of my internship with UTA, help start Arlington Proud, a local arts organization that created ONTAP, which has been at this bar. We have one year where we did a movie thing, and if you remember the murals that were over off Collins, we did that. Those have since been painted over, property development as it is. But I'd like to say that I believe in the wisdom of crowds. The more people we get involved, I think the better our answers and responses get, not who we get involved. Far too often, we rely and trust on people that, I'm not saying fail us, but don't have the entire vision of what the community needs. And that's why we need to include as many people in this process as possible. I look at the...
Thank you. For the sake of time...
Sorry.
Are we good? Okay, for the sake of time, this is the last question, and we're just gonna say yes or no. You can explain yourself a little bit. But again, your race is nonpartisan. This is a Republican group. Have you ever voted in a Republican primary before?
Whatever you started at.
Mr. Dobson?
No, the closest I ever came voting to a Republican primary was during the Ron Paul era, when he was ending the Fed or auditing the Fed. That was the closest I came. In fact, this last year, for the first time ever, I voted in a Democratic primary because I wanted Bernie Sanders to win because he believed what he said, where I don't believe that some of the other candidates believed what they said.
Sorry to cut you off. We're gonna run through this real quick. Yeah, but thank you for your answer. Ms. Odom Wesley?
Have I ever voted in a Republican primary? No. I typically vote Democratic, but I think it's important to look at what the candidates bring in each and every issue and not just be tied to a party.
Gotcha. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I have voted in Republican primaries, and I proudly did so. And I voted in Democratic primaries, and I proudly did done so. I'm more what you call an independent.
Thank you. Ms. Boxall?
Yes, I voted in numerous Republican primaries.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna do the thirty-second closing. Ms. Boxall, we'll start with you. And make sure, guys, that y'all and gals, y'all give y'all's phone number or website so that people can find you.
Okay, RebeccaBoxall.com is my campaign. It's pretty simple to remember, just my name dot com. Go on there, you can contact me, get in touch with me if you would need to volunteer, you want to donate, or if you just want to chat with me, it'll go to my email and I can respond to you. My entire career, I've always worked collaboratively, and that's how I like to work, and that's how I best work. And I always, and I will always listen to you and work collaboratively with you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Kennedy, K dot Jones. My website is KennedyJones.org, www.KennedyJones.org. COVID testing, I brought it to District Five. And COVID sign-up, we have that on Saturday. It will enroll almost about a thousand people. And then starting first of May at my facility, we're gonna have COVID vaccinations. We'll be vaccinated by a thousand people a day, which will...
Ms. Odom Wesley?
Okay, thank you. Barbara Odom Wesley, www.DrOdomWesley.com. I am endorsed by the Arlington Police Association, the Arlington Firefighters, the Young Men of Arlington, the Arlington Board of Realtors, the Tarrant County Central Labor Union, and I am your prepared, your purpose, and your experienced, proven incumbent. Looking for your vote on May first.
Thank you. Mr. Dobson?
You know, there's never enough time when you just have thirty seconds. My name is Chris Dobby Dobson. You can look for me under that. I have done a dozen years of surveys if you want to know more about me. I think one thing that I haven't been able to address yet is the events of January sixth. We need to have a real awkward conversation very soon about what happened that day. I have my favorite conspiracy theory, y'all aren't gonna like it, though, is that Trump sold out his base and got them federal charges in DC in order, in exchange for not being prosecuted. The only way we'll know if this is true is if he actually gets prosecuted for the many crimes he committed. I am, in fact, willing to have an awkward conversation with y'all tonight. So please, let's have this conversation. I'm polite. I wear a mask. I will promise you that when Arlington addresses the issue of privilege in a meaningful way...
All right. Thank you all for running. Please give her a round of applause. Everybody awake?
Hi, can I introduce myself to you real quick while we're changing up here? I'm Brian Harrison. Hi Kelly, I'm running for Congress. Hi man. What's that? Very much naggie. Absolutely. We, we don't, we only have two in Congress. We need to make it three, okay?
Oh my God. And we got two naggies right here.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We could do this all night, you know?
Hey, stay with us, folks. We'll start here in a second.
I'm here too, for you. Thank you.
I'm also a Southwestern. And we didn't have so much to...
Yeah, I figured it all out. Well, I'd love to have your vote. Real pleasure to meet you.
All right, everybody, ready? This is your Arlington Local School Board, the AISD. So, school board is important. Pay, pay attention. Um, I'm gonna run through the candidates. I don't think all of them are here, but if they are, please, uh, raise your hand. Um, Sam Abu, place one. No, okay. Place one, Polly Walton. Uh, Sarah McMorro. Melody Fowler. Michael Perkins. Aaron Reich, Dr. Aaron Reich. Richard Weber. Nafim Jackson. Watson Robinson Jr. Are you here? No? So just for everybody's knowledge, uh, they're running at large. The school boards are at large, so anybody can vote for them. Um, we're gonna do, because of time constraints, we're gonna do a one-minute opening each. So, uh, Mrs. Walton, we'll start with you.
Hold up, everybody, right now.
Everybody, this is important. This is school board. Everybody complains about school board. This is your chance to listen to the candidates. Make sure you're informed. All right. Mrs. Polly Walton, you got one minute, uh, opening. The floor is yours.
As a former retired school teacher, I'm asking everyone to please take their seat and listen carefully. I am Polly Walton. I'm running for reelection to Arlington Trustees Board, place one. Uh, I'm a volunteer and a public servant. I am not a politician, uh, thinking of other opportunities. I have lived in Arlington for forty-nine years. My kids all graduated from Lamar High School. I now have grandchildren in the Arlington Public Schools. I'm qualified, uh, very qualified, with over forty years of experience with the AISD as a teacher, a parent, a grandparent, and the last six years as a Board of Trustees member. I'm deeply devoted to Arlington, to our schools, to our teachers, to our kids. I taught at four different elementary schools, Short, Crowe, Spear, and Swift. I was Teacher of the Year at those schools twice. I was involved with the PTA throughout my teaching career. Uh, at Crowe, we built a playground.
Guys in the back, I ask, I kindly ask you to please show the respect to these candidates that they've shown to you. They're running to this, for this position because, uh, they have, I'm sure they all have hearts of service and I do this because they're getting paid half a million dollars or anything. So, guys, I kindly ask y'all, please let, uh, quiet it down back there. Uh, second, we have Sarah McMorro.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah McMorro. Um, I grew up mostly here in Arlington, and after college, I zoomed right back to our city because I've known, uh, most of my life that I wanted to teach here. Um, this is my home, and I have twelve years of experience of classroom teaching right here in AISD. Um, and during my tenure as a classroom teacher here, I wore many hats. I served as team leader. I was the curriculum writer for our Language Arts Department for ten years, a family engagement liaison for my campus. I was honored with the Aware Award for Excellence in Teaching, um, for our school district. And now I'm serving my first year as a district-wide literacy coach in Mansfield ISD. Um, I am very involved in the community. I'm a Sunday School teacher for Westminster Presbyterian. I'm a Delta Kappa Gamma, which is a National Society of Key Women Educators. I've been endorsed by Arlington Board of Realtors, Young Men for Arlington. I'm ready to serve you and your children.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Melody Fowler?
Hello, I'm Melody Fowler. I am a wife, a mom, a thirty-plus-year teacher, and a current member on the AISD Board of Trustees. I served as room mom and grade rep from K through six at my son's school here in Arlington. At Young Junior High, I served as President of the PTA for two years. And then when he went to Martin, I served as President of the Martin PTSA. Enjoyed that very much. Uh, my son got a great education here in Arlington, and he's now at UTA doing very well, so I feel good about that. I'm a member of Open Arms Clinic. I'm on the board. I'm on the board of the Arlington Night Shelter. And, um, I am endorsed by UEA, Arbor, and YMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Dr. Reich?
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna take a few seconds of personal privilege here. It is National Medal of Honor Day. And for those of you that are veterans, please raise your hand and be thanked. I think it's important. I, I'm running because I'm about community. I have been on the board since two thousand nine. I'm a past president. I've raised my family here. My wife and I have two businesses here. Our children are graduates of AISD. They are, uh, doing wonderful things out in the world. I bring to you what we need, which is the, the continuous, uh, the, the continuous continuity of the community's expectation for what this school district should be. I'm that conduit. I have been. Our achievement scores have gone up. Everything has gone up, uh, and I'll tell you more about it when I have time. That's all for now.
Thank you, Dr. ... Mr. Weber?
Hello, I'm Richard Weber. I'm running for place three on the school board. And in the words of Eddie Childs from four-plus decades ago, "I'm mad." This school board, in the middle of a pandemic economy, raised the tax, the amino tax, thirteen cents. They don't care about the citizens. They don't care who it affects. They just raised the tax. They don't care. They got a hole in their, they're burning a hole in their pocket with all this extra money now. They've lost touch with the citizens of Arlington, and the citizens of Arlington need to react. They need to say, "No more of this ridiculous tax reason." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Okay, Ms., Ms. Walton will start with you. First question. This is a popular one that's been asked to me. Uh, where do you stand on the use of critical race theory being used in the district?
Would you repeat that?
Uh, where do you stand on the use of critical race theory being used anywhere in this district?
I have no idea what you're talking about, so maybe you should, maybe you should elect someone else. Um, uh, if you're talking about equity, I certainly, uh, am excited that the Arlington School Districts are doing a study of, uh, where we stand on that issue and have plans to survey our community about that and try to, um, uh, bring opportunity and access to all of our students because all of our students are gonna be taking care of us at some point, and we want them all to do well.
Thank you.
Um, I disagree with critical race theory being integrated into our curriculum. Um, I, I do agree, um, with us teaching our children to love their country, love each other, and be patriots.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler?
Yes, I disagree as well. And I think we work really hard in this district to bring equity to everyone. We've opened so many, um, pathways to careers. We offer transportation so those students can get to those opportunities. So I think we're working hard on the equity issue.
Dr. Reich?
Yeah, I, I disagree that critical race theory is something that is being taught in our schools. So I, I challenge that question. Uh, to my colleague's point, equity is a big thing. We are in a, a community where our district is seventy-four, seventy-two, seventy-four percent socio-economically disadvantaged. Equity is important. It is a game changer. For us, our responsibility is to create the opportunities for those students, create, more importantly even, the access to those opportunities. And we have been doing that through a number of initiatives, and that is what has turned and changed the culture in this district. So, uh, again, I challenge that that's actually a thing. I, I don't think it is, and it's certainly not something that I support. Uh, supporting equity for everybody is so important. We all have to do that. If we don't go, all get involved and support that, Arlington is going to look like a much different Arlington in the future. We don't want that to happen, so that's all.
Thank you, Dr. ... Mr. Weber?
I would agree with Dr. Reich that it's currently not being taught in the district. Uh, equality is equality. It's not anti-equality, anti-pushing in the wrong direction. Equality is equality, and that's what I feel the district is doing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And we'll start with you, come back down this way. What is your position on charter schools? What, if any, harm has there, uh, have they done to Arlington ISD?
I have no problem with charter schools. I feel the more the competition, the causes, it creates a better product. So I, I think that the competition is good. Does it have the potential harming public schools? Yes, it does. But I still like charter schools. I like the competition. I believe it makes everything better.
Dr. Reich?
Uh, yes, uh, I don't have a problem with charter schools. I do believe in full choice. Well, we're a choice district as far as Arlington ISD is concerned. Uh, the, the thing that I, I do say though is with, well, a couple of things. One, with charters, if there's a charter application, the district has the opportunity to fight it, to speak against it, and we never do. We absolutely never do. As long as I'm a trustee, I'm not gonna sit for that. Uh, let, if, if people have an idea, there's different needs for every child, and charter may be the right need and fit for that child versus a public education. The, the, the one thing though is there has to be, we're talking about equity, there needs to be the same level of accountability because that's our public tax dollars. It's sales tax dollars funded versus property tax funded on the ISD side, but it is still, uh, public dollars, and, and there's not the same accountability. And the cost is almost, now, it's actually more than two to one to fund a charter per student than it is, uh, a public ISD student. So, there's work to be done there too.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you. Yes, I believe in choice as well. I have friends who have chosen to place their kids in charter schools and private schools, and I think it depends on the child and the parents for which school that they need to be in, so I respect that. The thing that worries me about charter schools is they don't have the same accountability that the public schools do. They take the state's money, but they don't necessarily have to prove anything or show how they're using that money and what they're doing like AISD does. So, I, I approve of the, the choice, but I would like to see them held to be more accountable.
Thank you. Ms. McMorro?
Um, I don't have a problem with, with, um, charter schools. I also agree that school choice, um, you know, that's up to the parents, and the parents should have that right. Um, school choice is a national movement, and a lot of people have their eyes on our Arlington Public Schools right now. Um, and I will tell you, as a public school educator myself of the past thirteen years, that, um, I truly believe, and also a public school product, um, that our very best quality of education is in our public schools. Um, I sent my own seven-year-old son, um, to Little Elementary right here in Arlington. Um, he's high-functioning on the autism spectrum, and he's receiving all the needs, um, uh, to his individual learning style. And, um, that's another reason why I'm running for place one, because I want to preserve the integrity and the quality of our public schools here in Arlington.
Thank you, Ms. McMorro. Uh, Ms. Walton?
Charter schools. I believe our Arlington School District gives parents a lot of choices for what, uh, programs they want their kids to be in. Uh, I agree with Dr. Reich and, uh, Ms. Fowler that if the playing field was level between charter schools and public schools, uh, it, it, it might be something I could get on board with.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with you again, Ms. Walton. Uh, during the pandemic, student achievement has suffered. What is your plan to remedy this crisis?
Well, first of all, we've got to, uh, help our kiddos get over the traumatic experiences they've had, and that's going to take some, uh, mental health professionals or counselors and so forth. Uh, then we're needing, going to need to develop a, a, um, special, uh, program for those that have experienced COVID slide, which is where they may not have, uh, gotten everything they needed to this past year. So, um, we will, uh, have the best, we have some of the best, uh, people in the district on curriculum, and, and they will come up with that plan. We're going to have a robust summer school to try to address both of, both the, um, the emotional situations with our kids and, uh, closing some of the gaps. So I hope that if you know young people, um, you will ask them to participate in that. It will, we will also offer some, um, uh, grade recovery for our high school kids.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. McMorro?
This is something I feel very strongly about, and it's actually what pushed me to run now rather than later. We have to change our learning model for our children. We have teachers down to the pre-K level, teaching both virtual and in-person learners simultaneously, and it's not working very well. Now, I respect the service of each of our trustees, but this is the strength that I can bring to our board to help us grow in, in, in this area. I'm in classrooms daily, directly supporting teachers with their language arts instruction, and I have solutions for the problems that we are facing with our curriculum. I really believe that we need to have our students have a teacher that can devote themselves to that population, and I know that that would not be my role as a school board trustee, but our job is to govern and oversee, and I'm ready to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler?
Yes, thank you. Virtual's been tough. It's been tough on the students, it's been tough on the parents, and it's been tough on the teachers. Unfortunately, we have such a large population in Arlington with our students that we aren't able right now to just devote some teachers to virtual and some teachers to face-to-face. There's not enough teachers for the amount of the kids. It was hard to bring back the children because of the mask and the six feet and all of that. So we had to find a way to teach those that wanted to come back to school and those that preferred to stay virtual. We had to honor their wishes. We're working on ways to change that for next year. We know we're gonna have to do remediation this summer. We're prepared for that. We're hiring more teachers, we're hiring counselors. We know that we need to do some remediation, but our kids are resilient, our teachers are resilient, and we will bounce back.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Dr. Reich?
Yeah, so, not to go into a lot of repetition, the, the main thing that we have to do with our children is love on them. Uh, what that translates to is a lot of, of social, emotional, and mental health, uh, checks, uh, for our teachers as well. Nobody likes the situation that we're in, nobody asks for the situation that we're in. Thankfully, we're in the mode of digging out now. And with that comes brighter days, all kids coming back in, and moving forward in the direction that we were moving before the pandemic ever started. So from an achievement standpoint, there certainly is going to be a slide. My focus though is we've got the experts in place to push on what those remediation, those catch-ups are gonna be through the summer school in the fall, and then let's, let's keep on moving. Let, let's go. Uh, the last six weeks, we're going to be able to end our hybrid at the high schools and bring all the kids back that choose it five days a week. We're getting there.
Mr. Weber?
The Arlington School District's experience and what it excels at is in-person teaching. Obviously, we need to get back there. Now, at the last board meeting, they talked about the robust summer school plan they're about to do. But basically, what it boils down to, if we have too many students that are too far behind, it may not be a popular decision, but we may need to hold back a bunch of students. It is so hard to build on a foundation that is missing major pieces. And if the school district can't do some kind of plan where they put all the slower parts and promote them and they keep them in the same class versus mixing them and do extra education or something, they can't just promote them without build, creating the foundation to build on. And that's gotta be a priority.
Okay, well, this is gonna be the last question. I apologize. I'm gonna have to cram this last one in because of time. Uh, and we'll start with you, Mr. Weber. Um, this is gonna be a two-fold. Always my question, have you ever voted in a Republican primary? Just a simple yes or no, even if you voted in one. But mainly, why are you running for the school board?
Yes, I've voted in, uh, Republican primaries many, many times. I've never voted in a Democratic primary. I'm running for school board because the board, the current board has lost contact with the people. Doing the, uh, tax increase is tied for the highest MNO tax rate in Tarrant County, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mr. Reich?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I, I've run in, uh, most every Republican primary or voted in every Republican primary. I, I'm running because, and, and this is true from my heart, I, I've been doing this since 2009, and it was a lot of thought and a lot of prayer. And through this pandemic, what, what I know is experience and leadership counts. It matters. There have been levers that I've been able to pull at the state level to help our district, to help all districts in the state because of my experience, and that's what I am continuing to do. Uh, I commit to you. You have entrusted me all these years. I hope that that can, that trust continues on. Now is not the time, as we're moving out of this pandemic, to step aside and let someone in legislatively, et cetera. The, the skills need to be there. I bring that. I bring it with both guns blazing. And I want to make sure that our children achieve, that our community achieves as a result.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you. Yes, I vote in the Republican primaries. I'm running because I think education is the key to a lot of success. Um, my parents always, uh, instilled education in us, and not necessarily that you have to go to college, maybe a trade school, but the more education you get, I think the, the better your future looks. There's lots more that I wanna do. I've been on the board for three years. I've done a lot of listening, a lot of asking of questions, and I think I'm prepared now to continue, and I would like to serve for, excuse me, another three years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. McMorro?
Yes, I have voted in Republican primaries, um, and I'm wanting to serve. My culmination of experiences, both personally and professionally, is what uniquely qualifies me. I'm ready to bring energy, integrity, and my love of children to the table to help our Board of Trustees, help the school district grow even more. Um, my website is www.sarahforaisd.com. I want to listen as well. I'm here to listen to you. So I'm also going to give you my cell phone number. It's 817-975-0893. You can reach me before and after the election because I love to touch base, and I'm ready to listen. I love our city deeply. I was a student here. I'm a parent here, and I am a lifetime educator and a lifetime learner. I am ready to serve you, your children, and grandchildren, so our district can continue to grow.
Thank you. Ms. Walton?
Uh, I'm running for reelection because we are still in a crisis. For many months, our team of seven trustees, two of here are on the dais with me, and the superintendent have been moving quickly to continually address totally unforeseen challenges. This has been an experience that no one could imagine unless you have been there. I'm proud to be endorsed by the United Teachers Educators Association. My website is www.hollywalton.com. I'm your proven incumbent here with leadership experience and a heart to serve. Please elect me again to place one, Arlington School District.
And Ms. Walton, uh, have you ever voted in a Republican primary?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I have voted many times in Republican, uh, primaries. Not always. I vote for the candidates that are going to support public education and our teachers and our kids.
This is the first time they've all, we've had a panel, everybody voted Republican primaries, so thank you. We're gonna do 30-second closing, no? Okay, if you wanna talk to the candidates, thank you so much for running. What's your website?
Yeah, th- thank you. I've got signs in the back. Please take them so I don't have to put them in my car. Uh, I've got, uh, this literature for you on the table, www.voterraernreich.com. Look me up, talk with me.
Anybody else? Website?
I also have signs in the back. It is www.melodyforschools.com. Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
I brought signs as well, and I'm sarahforaisd.com.
Mr. Weber?
I don't have a specific website for this election, but if you go to www.arlspectator.mysite.com, you'll find out I'm the most conservative person out there.
Ms. Walton? Thank you. Give everybody a round of applause. Next up is gonna be the, the Tarrant Community College.
I'm sorry, I'm running out of gas.